Good evening. I would like to call Monday, the Monday, January 9th, 2023, School Board Meeting to Order. Lisa, will you call the roll?
Director Weber.
Here.
W Felton.
Here.
Claflin.
Here.
Lala Bertie.
Here.
T Felton.
Here.
Bierman.
Here.
Raj.
Here.
That's seven present at six o'clock.
Excellent. Tonight is our annual School Board Organization meeting. We have a number of items on the agenda to get us set for the 2023 calendar year. First and foremost, we are excited to celebrate with our official swearing in of three new School Board members.
Pledge of Allegiance.
That's okay. It's okay.
Um, do, oh, hold on.
Don't worry about it.
Do I have to swear in then to pledge allegiance?
We can do the pledge allegiance and then do swearing.
Okay. So, let me back up. All right. Let us open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the motto that for which it stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right. Okay. I'll try again. All right, as we get through. Tonight is our annual Board Reorganization meeting. We have a number of items on the agenda to get us set for the 23 calendar year, but we are excited to celebrate with the official swearing in of three new School Board members, Anne Claflin, Tim Felton, and Bernie Bierman, as well as returning Board Member Wendy Felton. All four members were elected to four-year terms at the November 8th, 2022 general election. And because of this, we also have a new way of sort of announcing Board members, as we have two Feltons, as we kind of go through. But we will begin with oath of office. Dr. Zambrino, should we move down for this one? Or do we start here?
You want to start with the opening paragraph?
Sure. All right. For our oath of office, Bernie, Tim, Anne, and Wendy, it is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in the position of being both morally, legally responsible for equitable quality education for every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision for the board with extensive participation of the community, envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for our public schools. To achieve this vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure the continuous assessment to student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. And then, um, do we move down?
Yep, we'll begin with.
All right.
Director Felton.
Okay.
So I think if you want to go down with Tim, and you guys can do the swearing in.
I've not been on this side of things before, Sam. All right. And then, okay. Tim Felton, having signed the acceptance of oath of office, will you please publicly affirm your commitment by raising your right hand and repeating the oath of office after me?
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and this state.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of the School Board Member of South St. Paul Schools, Special District Number Six, to the best of my judgment and ability.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of School Board Member of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Number Six, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
All right.
Dr. Zambrino. Congratulations.
Wendy Felton, having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, will you please publicly affirm your commitment by raising your right hand and repeating the oath of office after me?
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of School Board Member.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of School Board Member.
Of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Number Six, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Number Six, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Zambrino.
Anne Claflin, having signed the acceptance and the oath of office, will you please publicly affirm your commitment by raising your right hand and repeating the oath of office after me?
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of School Board Member of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Number Six, to the best of my judgment and ability.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of School Board Member of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Number Six, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations. Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Last and certainly not least, Bernie. Bernie Bierman, having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, will you please publicly affirm your commitment by raising your right hand and repeating the oath of office? I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties.
And I will discharge faithfully the duties.
Of the office of School Board Member.
Of the office of School Board Member.
Of South St. Paul Public Schools.
Of South St. Paul Public Schools.
Special School District Number Six.
Special School District Number Six.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Tim, Wendy, Anne, and Bernie. I can say we are all excited to serve with you and do this important work alongside the rest of the board, with all of our fellow board members. All right. Moving forward to the rest of our agenda, I will ask for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening.
So moved.
As well as the meeting minutes of our Committee of the Whole and regular business meetings on Monday, December 12th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
Not to me. I wasn't there.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? And motion carries. And our next order of business for our meeting is to select our officers, and nominations are now in order for the Office of Chair for the term commencing on the first business meeting in January 2023 to the first business meeting in January 2024.
I nominate John Raj as the Chair of our School Board.
I would like to second.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Chair? Any other nominations for Office of Chair? Apparently I'm doing it a third time. Last call for nominations for Office of Chair. All right. Do I read this or do I pass this on?
You can.
Okay. Looks like John Raj is the only candidate nomination for the Office of Chair. I hereby declare him by acclamation for the term commencing on the first business meeting of January 2023 to the first business meeting of January 2024. That will be our Office of Chair. And thank you. Excited to serve. There we go. Now we move on to Board Vice Chair nominations. Nominations are now in order for Vice Chair for the term commencing on the first business meeting of January 2023 to the first business meeting of 2024. I would like to nominate Monica Weber for the Office of Vice Chair.
Second.
Are, do I ask three times? Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? Any other nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? And last call for nominations for the Office of Vice Chair. As Monica Weber is the only candidate nominated for the Office of Vice Chair, I hereby declare Monica Weber elected by acclamation for a term commencing in the first business meeting of January 2023 to the first business meeting of January 2024.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And we are now moving forward with Clerk nominations. Nominations are now in order for Board Clerk for a term commencing on the first business meeting of January 2023 to the first business meeting in January 2024.
I would like to nominate Nikki Lala-Bertie.
Second.
And are there any other nominations for the Office of Clerk? Any nominations for the Office of Clerk? And last call for nominations for the Office of Clerk. As Nikki Lala-Bertie is the only candidate nominated for the Office of Clerk, I hereby declare her elected for the acclamation by acclamation for a term commencing on the first business meeting in January 2023 to the first business meeting of January 2024.
Thank you.
And our last officer position for the evening, we have Treasurer nominations. Nominations are now in order for Treasurer for a term commencing on the first business meeting of January 2023 to the first business meeting in January 2024.
I would like to nominate Anne Claflin.
Second.
And are there any other nominations for the Officer, Office of Treasurer? Are there any other nominations for the Office of Treasurer? And last call for other nominations for the Office of Treasurer. As Anne Claflin is the only candidate nominated for the Office of Treasurer, I hereby declare her elected by acclamation for the term commencing in the first business meeting in January 2023 to the first business meeting of January 2024. Congratulations. All right. That's a whole lot of our business tonight. Board organization is our first meeting as we sort of put our pieces in order. All right, so we now move on to the reports section of our meeting. I will report that we did not receive any online submissions or attendees for public listening session that was held at 4:15 this evening. We always have public listening sessions the first meeting of the month and enjoy hearing from our community as well. The second part of our report on tonight's agenda is an update on the work that was done at this evening's Committee of the Whole meeting. Monica Weber, will you share a couple highlights of what we were doing?
I would love to. So before our board meeting, we have a Committee of the Whole meeting where a lot of like the more robust discussions of issues happens. Today, our first item was discussion of our framework for our budget process. We call it our Budget Guiding Change Document, which kind of frames how we want to start putting together our budget that we have to have approved by June 30th for the following school year. So we start now and it's a process. We also talked about the board organization, just to talk about who wanted to serve both in officer roles, on committee roles, and the other work that we do to run the board. And we also talked about doing a board evaluation. So doing, putting together an evaluation system so that we can evaluate ourselves and how effectively we are working, or potentially areas we could improve on. And that's going to be something this summer that then we will take a much deeper dive into, but we wanted to introduce the topic today.
Excellent.
Nice.
And last report for the evening is from Dr. Zambrino for highlights around the district.
Thank you, Chair Raj. Appreciate that. I got to get you to that a little bit, just like you do, I'm sure. So, well, first, just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year as we jump into 2023. We kind of joke in the office about those of us who really remember Y2K and, you know, the year 2000, getting to that point where some folks maybe don't as much, but it's hard to believe here we are in 2023. But I'm personally very excited about what lies ahead for our students, our staff, our entire community. We're going to do some great things in this new year, so excited about that. A lot to be thankful for as we go into the new year, although I will be happy if the snow reports slow down. I knew I would be dealing with that as superintendent. I didn't realize it would be almost a daily occurrence, so, but for those who like the snow, playing in the snow, snow skiing, et cetera, it's wonderful. So silver lining there. Also want to welcome all of our new board members, of course, welcoming back Wendy Felton, but our three new board members, excited to roll up our sleeves and get to work together, do some great things for our kids. My report will be a little shorter this evening, just knowing we're coming off of a break, so just a little bit shorter, but do have some things to highlight, want to make sure folks are aware. We have, so I mentioned this at a prior board meeting, we have our first ever South St. Paul Job Fair in partnership with the city. So on Wednesday, February 15th, from 3:00 to 7:00, at the Secondary Building, staff and from the city as well as from the district will be coming together to share information about jobs that we have available, looking to make sure people know all the great opportunities to work in South St. Paul, especially if people live in South St. Paul, but they don't have to, just need to be 16 years old or older. So you can stop by to learn about positions within the city or within the district and potentially even interview and be offered a job on spot. So excited to see how that goes, and maybe we'll have a new partnership that we're building with the city to keep people plugged into both the city and the district. We have our program brochure for Community Ed and Early Learning. Got a little later to mailboxes due to staffing shortages and shipping delays. I think we're all used to that kind of happening now, but want to make sure people do know that registration is open for all early childhood family education and community education classes. Another great way the district serves the community. And you can view the digital version of the brochure online before it makes its way to your mailbox. So if you're wanting to see what's out there, go to communityed.sspps.org. Some highlights from around the district, we had the annual sixth grade trip to Biztown, always a really fun opportunity for our kids. So for those who haven't heard about that, in sixth grade, students get to go to Biztown, which is located in St. Paul, but they get to run their own community for a day. So in the lead up to that, they were preparing for several days of becoming adults and running in an experimental learning lab. They learn what it takes to successfully run a business, to manage their own money and work as a team. And they engage in lessons and hands-on activities to see, you know, firsthand how, what their learning applies in the real world. I always think this is kind of neat. Leading up to the trip, they elect their own mayor, so that's kind of neat to, we know how elections are such a thing now, and great to think that our kids are engaged in that in-house here. And then students apply and interview for jobs. Businesses have CEOs and CFOs who prepare to lead for the day. So always a very memorable experience. Anyone who's passed sixth grade in South St. Paul will certainly speak fondly of that experience. Last Friday, we had the Minnesota Public Radio Brian and Susan Project come visit Capoja and put on a special performance. They told an interactive story about Paul Bunyan and Babe the Blue Ox. Students learned a variety of instruments used in the story and made special actions when certain songs were played. The story taught students about different styles of music as Paul and Babe traveled around the United States. So fun opportunity there. Outside of that, just a reminder that you can always follow us on all social media. Our communications team works really hard to put out positive stories, but also updates, things like that. We know weather may change on us, so that's one way we'll communicate in addition to other means, but keep an eye out there if you want to track things in the district. And then just some important dates coming up. January 16th is a district holiday, so there's no school in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. I know there are some great programs going on around town, so if you want to learn more and engage there, I'd say look to the city website and other places. February 3rd and 6th, we have no school for staff professional development. I mentioned already, February 15th, that's South St. Paul Job Fair. And then February 20th is also a district holiday, so we have no school on that day. As always, a reminder, if anyone's interested in tracking our board and the great work our board is doing, all meeting materials are available on our website, and just follow the cues on the screen there.
Excellent.
Thank you, Chair Raj.
Thank you, Dr. Zambrino. How early do those school weather calls start in the morning?
Well, I'm trying to think. So on Monday night, I went, well, Monday night is, yes, it was still Monday. My last text from my colleagues was, came in at 10:47 PM, and the first one came in at 3:14 AM. And I did have somebody ask, you know, does he really weigh these carefully? And I am known to get up and drive the roads myself at 4:00 in the morning because I already can't sleep anyways, so I usually drive, and if I can make it from my home to the district office and back, usually we're pretty good. But it is, it is a very difficult balance, I will say, just knowing that it's, it can be very easy to navigate sometimes the roads within the city, but we have a lot of staff who don't work or don't live in the city, so that is one of the factors. And of course, with flex learning, it's a little easier to call off school, but we also know that for some of our families, if school's not in session, they don't have childcare and puts them in a challenging spot of maybe having to call in, miss a day of work and things like that. So it is a very difficult decision that many of us have lots of sleepless nights trying to make and know that we always prioritize staff safety and student safety in those decisions. But yeah, it's a, it's a unique challenge. Thank you for asking.
Some very early phone calls.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. That concludes the reports section of our meeting. Moving on to regular business portion of our meeting, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent items on tonight's agenda, which include the annual organization items, such as approving the district's legal counsel, financial institutions, as well as other routine business in our financial claims, bills payable, staffing, and what looks to be two very exciting overseas field trip requests. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? And then that means the motion carries. We have no policies for review or approval this evening, so we are moving on to business items. Do expect some policy stuff through our regular rotation through the first part of this year. We have one item on the agenda for this evening, and it's for the approval of a resolution relating to the delegation of Clerk, Treasurer, and Treasurer duties to the Finance Director for day-to-day business. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Superintendent Zambrino, would you please share some background on this resolution?
Yeah, so this is just an annual action we take to delegate these authorities and make sure that we can keep the operations of the district functioning, so pretty standard annual practice that we engage in here.
Excellent. Thank you. Any discussion? Then Lisa, will you call the roll?
Director W Felton.
Yes.
Claflin.
Yes.
Lala Bertie.
Yes.
T Felton.
Yes.
Bierman.
Yeah.
Weber.
Yes.
And Chair Raj.
Yes.
Seven ayes.
And that would mean the motion carries. That is it for our business items this evening, so we will move on to the reports and informational items, where board members will report on recent education activities and events in which they have participated, as well as other informational items. And board members, why don't we start with Wendy? You always have a report for us.
Yes, several things that are upcoming in the district for this new year. We welcome everyone to 2023. As you know, I'm a very big fan of our theater department, and coming up in less than two weeks is the one-act play section at the Secondary Building. You can go on to the district website under Theater, and you can order your tickets, and it is, it is a fun event, directed, a lot of, a lot of students direct, they write the scripts, and it's, it's a very, very nice event. And also, I will be attending this Thursday, the Minnesota School Board Association Annual Conference, which will be held in the Minneapolis Convention Center. It is an annual event for statewide school board members can attend, and they have guest speakers. They give recognition to board members around the entire state. So it is a, it's a very good event. Looking forward to attending this. It is available every year in January, so always keep it in mind, it is a fun thing to do. And also, a couple really nice things coming up in two weeks in our district, actually within two weeks from today, starting out. A few things that are listed on our district website, there's a fundraiser for Lincoln Center, which will be held on Tuesday, January 24th, two weeks from tomorrow, which will be at Culver's Restaurant in West St. Paul between 4:00 and 7:00 PM, if you'd like to attend Culver's. I know I personally go there quite frequently. And a portion of all, there's 10%, of any sales purchases by South St. Paul members will be given to Lincoln Center as a fundraiser for them, so looking forward to that. And also, that week is our Para Professional Appreciation Week, which we truly appreciate all of our paras and our staff, so looking forward to recognizing and thanking our paras that week. And also, coming up, that same week, on that Tuesday, as we are already looking forward to our next school year coming up for 2324, it is kindergarten registration. We'll be signing up on that Tuesday, the 24th, at Lincoln Center and Capoja Education Center. So kind of keep that in mind if you have a, have a young child who, who can start kindergarten in September. If you have questions, feel free to contact Lincoln Center or Capoja for more information. That will be held, registration will be available in their building, so feel free to contact the schools if you have more questions regarding that. And also, I just want to congratulate, thank, and welcome our new board members that have joined us, Anne, Tim, and Bernie. We welcome you, we thank you, and we look forward to working with you as we support our students and staff. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendy. Director Tim Felton.
I don't have any prepared comments here, definitely not to compare with Wendy there, but no, something I've, no one compares with Wendy on that. I guess what I was involved in, which I'm always involved in, which I came from this location to here, down at Doug Wug Arena is the girls' hockey program, and it's, they're having quite an incredible year, and it's going to be a nice, fun postseason. I encourage I encourage anybody to watch girls' hockey if they have an opportunity.
Excellent, thank you. Director Monica Weber?
Well, just first of all, thank you to my fellow board members for the new role that I will be taking on. It's definitely exciting, and it's, you know, leadership moves ever forward, so you just need to keep rolling with the punches. I am looking forward greatly to the, the Minnesota Legislature started their work and their organization this week, and there's a lot of very positive information and vibes coming from both the legislative offices and the governor's office about all the phenomenal things they want to do for education. And I'm going to take them at their word, that they are going to accomplish those things, which will only benefit all the children in Minnesota. So I'm looking forward to that. I also appreciate, speaking of the snow, all the efforts of all the people who have to remove staff and otherwise organize the snow that we live around. I live by a school building, and the efficiency that they work with is quite impressive. Although, Dr. Zambreno, to your point, when the snowplow got stuck in front of my house and a team of shovelers had to come to remove the snow to unblock the snowplow, I think calling off school was probably the right decision in that moment. And so that was something I had not seen before. So yeah, so just thank you to everyone whose job it is to make it so that we can leave our houses and go about our day.
Excellent, thank you. Director Bernie Bierman?
I did want to say one thing.
This is your moment.
She isn't directly a report on the committee, so I want to say thank you to all the staff members and past and present board members who reached out to me and made the transition into the school system that I graduated out of in 1956. Just much appreciated from all of you, very, very much. Just want to say that.
Excellent, thank you. All right, Director Anne Claflin?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to volunteer in Capoja before the winter break and was very impressed by all the students that I met that day. Second grade classroom, these kids were excited to help each other out, doing a big group activity. And there were fifth grade students also assisting, trying to keep things flowing in the classroom. All these students were so respectful of each other, helpful, and they wanted to help their classmates do well. It was really great to see that sort of kindness. Also, for Capoja students, there's an opportunity to be creative and show your voice with a PTA-sponsored art contest. If you are interested in dance, or art, music, film, photography, or really just about any type of artistic expression, we want to see how you can show your voice. And there are food distribution opportunities available where students can bring home food to help cover that weekend food gap. If your family needs some assistance to get through that weekend, our school nutrition services and, I believe it's called Open Doors, are coordinating to make sure that we all have food for our students over the weekend. And then I'll be representing the school board on the Local Issues Committee that brings together folks from across South St. Paul, businesses, fire departments, neighbors, library, from all different corners of South St. Paul. And our next meeting will be on January 25.
Excellent, thank you. And Director Nikki Lolliberty?
If I may speak for the board, I'd like to express sympathy to the John Lolly family. John passed away a week or so ago, 10 days ago, and the service and the funeral are Wednesday. John served on the school board for a number of years and has been involved, had been involved in the school district. I know the kids, his children, went to South St. Paul schools, and it's a real loss for their family and for our community. So I would just like to express our deepest sympathy and that we're thinking of you.
Well said, thank you very much. In my last report, over this last weekend, I got to go to our first show choir competition of the season, and loved all of that, and it was very exciting, and our South St. Paul students did such a tremendous job, so it was great to see. And I think that's where we're at. With no business items on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn on Monday, January 19, 2023 meeting.
Second.
And second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned at 6:36.